Alright, so I'm Aki. First and foremost, I want to give all praise on and glory to Yahweh Shema Yehoshah. I want to give double honors to the elders, a great millstone that rule very well. And bless us to all the Aki out there that are doing the work in sincerity and truth on the four corners of the earth. Now, the topic of this video is gonna be about reincarnation of Yahweh Shema, but this particular video is gonna be based around Adam, alright? In the beginning, when Adam was formed, alright? So... Uh, first, I'm gonna start this off, I'm starting the book of Genesis. Um, y'all can follow me along if you want to in the Blue Letter Bible, uh, blueletterbible.org. Uh, you can click on the link in the description, because I'm gonna add the website in the description. Uh, you can follow along through there, or you can follow along through your Bible if you have one. Alright, so... Uh, first, I'm gonna start in the book of Genesis, and um, I'm starting Genesis chapter 1 verse 26, alright? So, this is Genesis chapter 1, verse 26, and I'm gonna read it for bait him. Alright, and it says, "And God said, 'Let us make man in our image, after our likeness, and let them have dominion over the fish of the sea, and over the fowl of the air, and over the cattle, and over all the earth, and over every creeping thing that creepeth upon the earth.'" Uh, verse 27, "So God created man in his own image; in the image of God created he him; male and female created he them." Alright, so, let's look at it for a second, let's, let's, let's analyze this verse for a second, alright? So, it says, "And God said, 'Let us make man in our image, after our likeness, and let them have dominion, let them, them, have dominion over the fish of the sea, and over the fowl of the air, and over the cattle, and over all the earth, and over every creeping thing that creepeth upon the earth.'" Alright, so, it says, "Let us make man in our image," alright? "Let us make man in our image," alright? So, who's the "us"? Alright, who's the "us" that it's talking about? Alright, and, actually, I'm gonna look it up right, I'm gonna pull it up right now. Because I got, uh, Camtasia Studio running at the same time. And my internet is acting crazy again. There we go, alright, so... Uh, it says, "And God," let's look that up right there. This should be H430. Alright, so, this is, by the way, this is Yiddish, alright? And you can, and you know this is Yiddish because it has vowels in it. Alright, you see that E and that O right there? E and O is not supposed to be in there. Alright, the actual pronunciation of that word should be "Allah Ha'Yam," alright? So, because remember, there is no, there's, there's no vowels in the, on the paleo Hebrew. Alright, there's only consonants. And when you try to sound out a consonant word without a vowel, it sounds like baby talk, alright? So, that should be "All," alright? And that's "La," that's "Ha," and that's "Ya," and that's, that's "Ma," that's, those are all the consonants that are in Hebrew, alright? So, it's "Allah Ha'Yam," because the two letters right here join together, alright? And then "Yam" makes it, makes the word plural, alright? And "Ha" just means, just means "the," alright, like T-T-H-E, "the." Alright, so, and "Allah" means "power," alright? So, you have "Allah Ha'Yam," "Allah Ha'Yam." Alright, so, "Allah," "power," "Ha," "the," "Yam," which makes it plural, alright? So, you have "The Powers," which makes it plural, of course, "The Powers," alright? "Allah Ha'Yam," "The Powers." Alright, now, let's go back. Now, let's read it, now, let's read it the way it's supposed to sound, alright? And that's Genesis chapter 1 verse 26, alright? And let's read it. "And the powers said, 'Let us make man in our image.'" See, now, it's starting to make sense, now, it's starting to sound correct. "After our likeness, and let them have dominion over the fish of the sea, and over the fowl of the air, and over the cattle, and over all the earth, and over every creeping thing that creepeth upon the earth." Alright, so, there you go. Now, let's go to... Uh, Genesis. Actually, to make, to solidify that, I want to bring out two, actually, two scriptures. Uh, this is Genesis chapter 5 verse 1, alright? Just to solidify that fact, that it's talking about... Uh, there were more, there are more than Adam and Eve in, in the beginning, alright? Just, just one Adam and one Eve. Alright, so, this is the book of the generations, Genesis chapter 5 verse 1. "This is the book of the generations of Adam. In the day that the powers created man, and the likeness of the powers made he him." Alright, "Male and female created he them, and blessed them, and called their name Adam." "Called their name Adam." Their name Adam. That, that's self-explanatory, that's self-explanatory, alright? "In the day when they were created," alright? So, it said, "Called their name Adam." So, at that time, they would be known as the Atomites, alright, the, the Atomites. But, you keep going, and it says, "And Adam lived a hundred and thirty years, and begat a son in his own likeness after his image, and called his name Seth." Alright, so, in verse 3, it's actually talking about the person named Adam, alright? Because yes, you had, you had Atomites at that time, but there was one particular person that was, um, that was chosen, out of that, out of all the, out of all the Atomites that were there. There was one person that was chosen, alright? And of course, that person is Yahweh Shema. Alright? And like I said before, the, on the powers, it was known as the elect. The powers is known as the elect, alright? Because the elect are the first fruits, alright? The elect are the first fruits of the earth. So, that's what, that's what, that's what, that's who Yahweh Shema created in the beginning, alright? Yahweh gave, gave the order to Yahweh Shema to create, create the other angels, who was known as the, the, the elect, alright? Uh, let's go to Genesis chapter 2 verse 7. Actually, no, let's go to John. Alright, this is John chapter 1 verse 1, alright? It says, "In the beginning was the word." And the word, that word "word" there means, um, well, the word "word" is capitalized, alright? So, it's capitalized, so, that's talking about Yahweh Shema, alright? Because Yahweh Shema was the word. Because remember, the scriptures said, um, in Psalms, uh, the chapter escapes me right now. It said, "Lo," it said, "Lo, I come in the volume of the book it has written of me," alright? Hebrew chapter 10 says the same thing, "Lo, I come in the volume of the book it has written of me." So, it says, "In the beginning was the word," which is Yahweh Shema. "And the word was with the powers," alright? And you were replaced that word, God, there were powers. And the word was the powers. Why, why does it say, why does it say that? It's because Yahweh Shema, of course, Yahweh Shema made the other, the other, um, angels, alright? Which were the elect, alright? Because the word, um... They all, they all stem from the Most High, alright? So, the Most, Yahweh Shema would stem from, from... Yahweh Shema would stem from the Most, the Most High, which, um, basically, in the scriptures, it said, um, him, him and his father are one, alright? Because they go, they're, they're both in one accord, alright? But that doesn't, that doesn't mean that they're the same person, alright? Because in the book of Daniel, it, um, explains to you that they're two, they're two different entities, alright? Because it speaks about the Ancient of Days, and then it speaks about, um, Yahweh Shema himself, alright? It goes into the description of Yahweh Shema. Yahweh Shema went to his father in the book of, uh, Daniel saw a vision in the book of Daniel, alright? He saw a vision, and he said, um, Yahweh Shema, uh, went to the Ancient of Days. And the Ancient of Days is talking about the Most High, alright? So, that lets you know that it's two different entities, alright? So, basically, in the beginning, they were all in one accord, alright? Right, so... Alright, that's it right there. Because there's also a book, the Book of Jude, talks about, um, the angels which kept not the first estate, alright? Which, um, went down into the earth to everlasting chains, unto darkness, until the judgment of the great day. Now, that first estate is talking about the spirit world, because they were all in the spirit world during that time, and they were, uh, creating earth at that time, because the, the elect, alright? The angels that was Yahweh Shema created helped them, helped him make the earth, alright? And everything that you see today, alright? So, they left their first estate and entered into... The, um, the people that were made, alright? Because it said, "Let us make man in our image," alright? So, they, so, they went down into the earth, alright? And they dwelt on the earth during that time, during the time of Adam, alright? And I want to grab another scripture. To further solidify that there's more than, more than one person, you know, Adam and Eve, there's more than one, one person there. Alright, so, this is, um, the account when Cain slain, slain his brother Abel, alright? So, uh, this is Genesis chapter 4 verse 14. It said, "Behold, thou hast driven me out this day from the face of the earth, and from thy face shall I be hid, and I shall be a fugitive and a vagabond in the earth; and it shall come to pass that everyone that findeth me shall slay me." Alright, so, when a regular person reads this, they think Adam and Eve are the only people on the earth. Now, they both, they both conceived, alright, they, well, Eve conceived and, um, gave birth to Cain and Abel, right? And if you kept, if you, if you had kept reading it, you know, if a regular person kept reading it, they would think that, oh, well, then, if they're the only two people on the earth, there's only one, there's only two sons that they had, you know? Those are the only people that are on the earth, alright? But, right here, it says that, um, "And it shall come to pass that everyone that findeth me shall slay me," alright? So, who was, who was Cain worried about him being slain by? If he was, he, if, if he just slew his brother, alright? And it was only Adam, Eve, Eve, Adam and Eve, and Cain at that time? So, who, who would he be worried about that should slay him? You know, it, it wouldn't make sense if he, they were just the only people there. So, there was more than one, there's more than Adam and Eve there, alright? That's the, that's the further solidified what I'm talking about, when there were more than one person on, on the earth, alright? Now, I want to go back to Genesis chapter 1 real quick. Actually, I want to go to Genesis chapter 2, because that's where I'm, that's where I wanted to go to. Because I wanted to back up to, um, I want to back up the point that I made, but, um... I believe I spoke about, there's only one particular, there's one particular Adam, out of all the Atomites. There's one particular person that, um, that was special, alright? I would say that, that was special. Alright, so, the Genesis chapter 2 verse 7, alright? And it said, "In the Lord's power formed man of the dust of the ground, and breathed into his nostrils the breath of life; and man became a living soul," alright? So, it says right here, "And breathed into his nostrils the breath of life." Alright, so, let's go to Job chapter 33, verse 4. Alright, so, this is Job chapter 33 verse 4, and it reads, "The Spirit of the Most High hath created me, and the breath of the Almighty hath given me life." Alright, so, actually, let's back that up real quick. Alright, yeah, okay, let's read it again. So, Job chapter 33 verse 4, alright? It says, "The Spirit of the Most High hath made me." Was, that spirit is talking about Yahweh Shema, alright? "And the breath of the Almighty hath given me life." The breath of the Almighty had given me life. What's that breath, alright? What's the breath that it's talking about? Same thing in Genesis chapter 2 verse 7, that's what it's talking about, the, the breath of life. The breath of life is in scriptures, alright? That's the breath of life. Because it's, there's an account in Ezekiel, the book of Ezekiel, where Ezekiel, um, Ezekiel chapter 27, I believe. Uh, you know, let me get that real quick. Because there's an account where, um, Ezekiel was commanded to go out and prophesy unto, um, the bones, alright? He said, "Prophesied," then the Most High said, "uh, prophesy unto these bones, so that they may join once, one with another," alright? Right, so, it's Ezekiel chapter 37. Yeah, Ezekiel chapter 37, um... Yeah, verse 1 is the valley of the dry bones, alright? Ezekiel chapter 37 verse 1, "The hand of the Lord was upon, was upon me, and carried me out in the, in the spirit of the Lord, and set me down in the midst of the valley, which was full of bones, and caused me to pass by them round about; and behold, there were very many in the open valley; and lo, they were very dry; and he said unto me, 'Son of man, can these bones live?' And I answered, 'O Lord Power, thou knows.' Again he said unto me, 'Prophesy upon these bones; and say unto them, 'O ye dry bones, hear the word of the Lord; thus saith the Lord Power unto these bones: behold, I will cause breath to enter into you, and ye shall live.'" Alright, so, there's that word "breath" again. So, it lets you know that the breath is talking about these scriptures, alright? Because the valley, um, the valley of the dry bones, you know? It's actually, it's actually parabolic, alright? Because, um, the valley of the dry bones, um, that, that, well, first of all, they're dry because, you know, somewhere, something is dry, then that means it doesn't have any water, alright? So, well, that's why the scriptures say in John chapter 7, alright? It says, um, "He that believeth on me," as the scripture said, "out of his belly shall flow rivers of living water," alright? And... The bones, actually, you know, they're just bones, but, uh, they, they'll, they'll come together, alright? And actually, that's in verse 6, alright? This is the same chapter, verse 6. "And I will lay sinews upon you, and will bring up flesh upon you, and cover you with skin, and put breath in you; and ye shall live, and ye shall know that I am the Lord." Alright, there's that word "breath" again, alright? He said, "I will, and you will bring up flesh upon you," alright? So, what's that, what's it mean by "bring up flesh upon you"? That means, um, giving you an identity of who you are, alright? And just, that's just a quick, just a quick, this is, this, you know? Just a quick breakdown of that, because I want to get back on the subject, alright? I don't, I don't want to stem, stem too far from the subject. But yeah, that's what it means, um, "will bring up flesh upon you, and cover you with skin, and put breath in you." Alright, so, it's giving you an identity of who you are, of course, the so-called Negroes, Latinos, and Native Americans, alright, Israelites. "And put breath in you, and ye shall live, and ye shall know that I am the Lord," alright? And you live through the scriptures, alright? That's what gives you life. It says, "Ye shall know that I am the Lord," alright? And that's how you, and that's how you find out what type of, what type of person that the Lord is, alright? You gotta read through the scriptures, you see what type of, what type, what type of power he is. Alright, now, let's go back to Genesis chapter 2. And back where it says, "In the Lord's power formed man of the dust of the ground, and breathed into his nostrils the breath of life." See, now, we know what that breath is, alright? "And man became a living soul." Alright, so, basically... This is, uh, basically talking about the, the people that were there during that time, alright? They had, uh, they had the breath of life at that time. But it was only one particular, one particular people that actually had that breath, alright? And they would be known as the Atomites. I don't know if I covered this already. I don't, I don't think, I don't think I did cover this appropriately. I probably did, but I'm gonna just go back, I'm gonna just go back over, just in case, and I'm not sure if I went over already or not, but... You know, Genesis chapter, this is Genesis chapter 5 verse 1, alright? So, Genesis chapter 5 verse 1, um, I'm gonna go over it again, just in case. I'm not sure if I went over, but I'm gonna go over it. Um, because I did, I've done this video over some, like, two or three times already, because, um, this is what I messed up on the other ones, I'm trying to, I'm trying to make it as perfect, as, um, close to perfect as I possibly can. Alright, so, the Genesis chapter 5 verse 1, it said, "This is the book of the generations of Adam in the day that the Most High created man, and the likeness of, um..." Well, that should say "powers," alright? "In the day that the powers created man, and the likeness of the powers made he him; male and female created he them, and blessed them, and called their name Adam." Alright, so, male and female, this verse 2, "Male and female created he them, and blessed them," alright? "And called their name Adam in the day when they were created." It said, "He called their name Adam." So, they, so, right there, it just tells you that they're, they were known as Adam, alright? Like, like today, you know, you know us as Israel, alright? Or the Israelites, but you would call them the Atomites, alright? So, let's go back to Genesis chapter 2 verse 7. Alright, so, um, this is Genesis... Yeah, Genesis chapter 2 verse 20, alright? And it says, "And Adam gave names to all cattle, and to the fowl of the air, and to every piece of the field; but for Adam there was not found and help me for him." Alright, and actually, this is the first time that the name Adam was actually mentioned in the scriptures, alright? In verse 2. But it was expounded in chapter, chapter 5, alright? Uh, I believe that is, I believe that's it. Because this, because this video is based around, based around Adam himself, alright? I was, I was only gonna go into Adam, because the book, the book of Genesis is, um, the book of Genesis is, 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 is a deep, deep book, alright? Because, um, it has, it has like so much, it's, 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 it's like so, it's, it's deep, I mean, Gen... Both Genesis and Revelations, they both are, uh, very deep. But Genesis is, that book will, uh, leave you, leave you going, going nuts, you know? But, Lord's will, I was able to actually make it, make it through this lesson, alright? To the best of my ability. But, um, yeah, like I said, that's, that's, that's it, that's all I can bring out about, um, Adam. Which gives you proof that Adam was actually, um, Yahweh Shema in the beginning, alright? Because like I said, like I said, um, before, that Yahweh, the Most High, created Yahweh Shema, and Yahweh Shema created the other angels, right? And they all left their first estate to go into, um, to go into, to dwell in the earth, alright? Actually, there's another thing I want to bring out, I just thought about it, going way off. Yeah, sometimes, yeah, sometimes when you go on a Blue Letter, you have to pick the bones out of the Blue Letter, because the Blue Letter goes off too, alright? So, actually... That word, "Adam," is, um, "Adam," alright? And actually, that word, word is supposed to mean, uh, I thought my camera was going nuts. Let's go to etymology, let's see what it says, because... Ah, oh, look, look what I found, Atomite. So, yeah, there we go, Atomite. I didn't even, I didn't even think about pulling up the, um, the etymology online, until, and then I typed in the word "Adam," and there it is, Atomite. He would be the descendant of Adam, there we go, Atomite. Alright. Alright, "Adam was this masculine proper noun, biblical name of the first man, progenitor of the human race, from Hebrew, Adam." Which... It says, they got "man" here. It says, literally, literally, which means, yes, this is, this is the true, this is the true definition of what Adam means. "The one formed from the ground." Hebrew "Adama," that's what I was looking for, I was looking for the word "Adama," which means "ground." So, let's go back to where I had that. So, yeah, that's actually "Adama." Right, "Adama." Which means, which means the ground, alright? "Adama," that's "Da," that's "Ma." Right here, they have it, they, they put it together as "Adam." But "Adama" means "ground," so, it's from the ground, so, there you go. I didn't even think, I didn't even think about pulling up the etymology online, until now. But, hey, that's, that's all through the spirit of Yahweh Shema Yehoshah, man, telling you. And I was just about, I was just about to end it too, until I, you know, thought about looking up, um, the word "Adam." You know, it's just, the spirit just told me to go, go on etymology online and look it up. But, there it is, alright, well, that's it, that's all, that's all I wanted to bring... That's all I had to bring up, alright? Because, uh, back where it says, um, "He formed, he formed man from the ground." Let's get that, yeah, uh, Genesis chapter... 2. Yeah, "In the Lord's power formed man out of the dust of the ground," from verse, chapter 2 verse 7, "and breathed him," that's the person, like, there you go. So, "formed Atomites." One person, one person was known as Adam, which was Yahweh Shema in reincarnation, where Yahweh Shema was in the beginning, when the scriptures said, "He is the beginning and the ending," alright? And, basically, he, he was, he's responsible for naming the animals, alright? Or the different creatures that were on the earth. Alright, so, there you go, let's, let's see Yahweh Shema as Adam. Alright, so, um, hopefully, you, um, new brothers out there were edified by this. And, um, basically, I got some edification out of it too, because I went to, um, etymology online, right there. And actually, looked it up, so... And actually looked it up, so, uh, there you go, um, once again, I hope you're, um, you're brothers out there that are new. Redified by this, um, you know, any. Any of your brothers are already in the truth, I hope you were edified by this as well. So, um, yeah, so, once again, I wanna give all praise, honor, and glory to Yahba Shemiashah. I wanna give double honors to the elders, a great millstone, and rue very well, and blessings to the elect. Alright, and the outcome that doing the work, sincerity and truth. And with that, I'm gonna say, shalom.